Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting, September 2025, 25th, 2024. At 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Call the meeting to order, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Allison, may I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Madigoo.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor.
Present.
Mayor Johnson II.
Present. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing to consider comments on the 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR, and the community development needs that could be addressed with community development block grant funds. I see that no one has signed up to speak. For those who wish to testify, there were three options available, which are described in the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:01 PM. Does the staff have a report?
Yes, I have a short presentation, but it does look like I am not able to share my screen.
I'll try.
Okay. Perfect. It should be pulling up right now. Here we go. Yeah, sorry about that.
Is it open? Or is it open?
It's in part, it's in the presentation mode, so as soon as I open it, it pulls up.
Why don't you just give the presentation?
Okay.
We can just verbally review the presentation.
Because you've actually seen it before at the work session, correct?
This is a different presentation specifically on the outcomes related to the Community Development Block Grant for the 2023 to 24 fiscal year or program year. And even though I have a lovely PowerPoint and I can send that out after the meeting, I'll just go through the outcomes really quickly. And we're, in addition to hearing comments on our performance from this past year, we're also, as Mayor mentioned, oh, thank you, hearing comments on the community needs that could be addressed in the future with the Community Development Block Grant. So the goal of the CDUBG program is to develop viable urban communities that principally to benefit the low and moderate income residents and neighborhoods. So with that in mind, during the 2023 year, we were able to support Dev Northwest, who completed two housing rehab projects, and they began six projects that will then be completed in the following year. And then also, we had devoted CDUBG funds to creating Housing Coalition earlier in their, earlier phases of their project, but now we're able to report that they have constructed 27 affordable housing units, so that's kind of fulfilling the performance outcome that was intended by that earlier funding. And I included a picture of one of the results of the housing rehab projects, which is some accessibility improvements, including the ramp in the front. We also supported some public services with these funds, including childcare, so the YMCA was able to provide 21 scholarships to children from low or moderate income families to be able to access their childcare services. And the Boys and Girls Club provided 108 scholarships to Albany youth from low and moderate income families to access their after-school and summer childcare programs. For the Senior Companion Program through Oregon Cascades West Council of Gomrims, they were able to support 13 homebound seniors who had people come to their home and help them with the kind of daily tasks and also transportation so they can run errands and access medical care. And then through the Emergency Motel Stay Program, the Cardvo was able to serve 21 individuals seeking safety from abuse. And for reducing homelessness, Jackson Street Youth Services provided shelter and case management to 61 youth, which is a pretty good increase from last year, where I think they only served 34 with these funds, so glad to see that. They're able to serve more youth. And COE provided outreach and resource connection to 921 residents, unsheltered residents, and case management for 41 of our most vulnerable unsheltered residents. And then finally, we were able to spend some funding on Lehigh Park improvements. I wish I could give you the whole, like, it's fully installed and beautiful, but we were able to purchase the playground equipment, and that will be installed in the coming year. So this year, or this past year, we've served primarily not Latino Hispanic residents, so I'm not sure why there was kind of a drop compared to last year in terms of our ability to serve Hispanic and Latino residents, so that's something that we'll kind of look at moving forward. How can we make sure that those grants, those that are receiving these grants are adequately serving that community? And then about the same in terms of our distribution of serving across racial groups in Albany, and that is, you know, largely in line with our population here, so nothing too out of the norm there. And that kind of concludes my presentation on the performance outcomes. Moving forward in terms of looking at community needs, we're hosting agency consultations, so agencies that serve low and moderate income families or other vulnerable populations are coming to our Community Development Commission meetings to share what they see as far as community needs, where are the gaps, and where do we need more services? So that's one way we're collecting community needs, but also tonight is an opportunity to hear more about what those community needs might be. Are there any questions or comments?
Counsel.
You mentioned that you weren't sure why the population differed from previous years. Are you doing anything in hindsight to maybe shore up those numbers or make sure we're serving a broader part of our population?
Actually, I need to end the public hearing, then we have discussion. Correct, Sean? We're okay? Okay, go ahead.
That was, that was my question.
So I would say it might be, I would like to go back and look at, were there big differences between, different agencies were funded each year, so were there big differences in, like, was there an agency that really was specializing or doing a great job of that last year that we didn't fund this year for whatever reason? So that would be one question that I had, but I will say that moving forward with our contracts and for this year, I am trying to emphasize making sure that subrecipients are doing adequate outreach and providing their program information in both English and Spanish is one way to kind of help encourage better outreach to our Hispanic and Latino population, even though I know not, that's not a barrier for all of them.
Excellent, and then I, you quickly went through the numbers for the populations that we are serving. Are those, how, how close are those in alignment to what our population is here in Albany? Are we serving, like, so if we have, you know, 15% X population, are we meeting the needs of serving about 15%? Is it, I'm just curious.
I would say it's broadly in line, but I'd have to go back and check the exact, like, latest census data for what our racial breakout is.
So we have about 14% Latino households in Albany now. I mean, that's just one that sticks out in my mind, and then, you know, the, the non-white population is, is lower than that, you know? So it's, I think, I think we're at 83% of the white population, but, I mean, the people needing services, you know, it, it really just depends on who these agencies are serving. I know in the past, we had one agency that served lots and lots of people, and, and they seemed to have a high ratio. I think one, a shelter in the past served a lot, but it just, it really just depends on, on who's seeking services from the agencies. And so we do have a question in the application process that, you know, how diverse is your organization, and what are your, you know, how do you address equity and accessible services? So, but most of these agencies have been funded routinely, and, and maybe on a more positive side, maybe there haven't been as many needs in some of the minority populations.
Excellent. We'll hope, we'll hope that that's true.
And the Jackson Street difference in that number, their shelter, you know, grew by 10 beds to 16, so I think that's why we're seeing an increase in youth being served, so that addition, I think, is making a difference.
That's good to know. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other councils have, thank you. Any other councils have any clarifying questions? Please.
Thank you for the map.
You're welcome. Remember this time.
Written materials submitted to, before the deadline, forwarded to the staff, the council, written materials were submitted by, so we had no written material submitted. No one signed up to sign, speak virtually. I will call, I will now call on those registered to speak, which there were none per the sheet. Does anyone in council that is attending to me like to speak on this topic? Saying none, I will now declare this public meeting closed at 6:10 PM. Counsel, any more discussion around this topic? Counselor Smith.
Just a comment, I know it's only 13 people who were helped by the Senior Companion Program, the portion that's done with CDUBG, but that's 13 people who need it. I was in another meeting yesterday for the Lynn County Transportation Advisory Commission or Committee and discussing their, the needs of the transit providers for the coming biennium, and Senior Companion Program is operated through Senior and Disability Services through COG. They are putting in a grant application for mileage for the volunteers who help, who are the senior companions. They get paid 40 cents an hour, or 40 cents a mile to do what they do with their, the people that they help, and all those things just add up. They're little, little bits of help, but they add up to a, a big thing for the people who are receiving those services. I'm glad that we are able to play a part in that.
Any other counsel?
Yeah.
So I, I'm really appreciative of that 13, that number, because most of my clients in my business are over the age of 65, and some are less fortunate than others, so something like this has been really helpful, and I actually have the flyers in my office when I hand them out to seniors so they can access those services. So I appreciate the COG for that, and I appreciate your comments, Counselor. And does any other counsel have anything before I move on? Thank you. Would a counsel like to make a motion to authorize staff to submit the 2023 CAPR to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, what we all know as HUD?
I will make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion that is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing to receive comments of the city's pathways to removing obstacles to housing, PRO Housing, grant application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to funding or remove obstacles to affordable housing development. For those who wish to testify, there were three options available, which are described in the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:13 PM. Does the staff have a report? And yes, you do.
I'll, I'll be really quick, there is no PowerPoint. So a year ago, we applied for these funds in partnership with the Farmworker Housing Development Corporation. We weren't successful, there were 21 out of 150 applications nationwide, I think, were funded, so we're trying again, broadening the scope of the application, asking for a little bit more money, and asking for $2.5 million to start an affordable housing fund that would then be used to accelerate affordable housing production. The, the rest of the grant is also removing barriers to housing production, which is what we've been working on with our housing implementation plan and even looking at additional strategies. So we're hopeful that we might get the grant, and if so, we can really try to impact, you know, move, move the needle on having more affordable housing built in Albany. So you did have three partnership letters in the packet, and you got two more this afternoon. I just wanted to mention that, and I can answer questions.
Counsel, any clarifying questions? Counselor Novak was first up.
Thank you. Would you define areas of opportunity for me, please?
Yeah, I think those are areas that are close to services, transit, accessible. I mean, it, it's not a specific definition, but good schools, so.
All right, thank you, I have a few further questions.
Each person considers an area of opportunity differently, it's unique to that person, so if somebody is hoping to live close to where they work, or if somebody wants to try to be in a certain school district, it, it isn't anything concrete, and I can't, it's not on the ground in any one area, but our future climate-friendly areas are kind of areas that we think of as areas of opportunity where we might be able to have a mix of housing and jobs that are more accessible by transit, for example. That might be.
Do we know where those areas are?
Yep, there are six that have been identified. We've, we had a report due last year, we're working on more public input, and we'll be bringing that for adoption early next year.
Okay, I would also appreciate assistance with something from page seven of your grant. It says, "The city of Albany is a HUD priority geography for affordable housing needs due to its off-pace factor exceeding both national and state thresholds." I do not know what that means.
HUD came up with a formula to analyze all the jurisdictions across the country with how many, what's the rate of our housing production compared to the rate of housing production nationally and also with the state? And so they created this term, the off-pace factor, and we are not building housing at, affordable housing at a rate that is, it's slower than the nation and Oregon. I mean, we don't build housing, but that's, there's, it just shows that there's a demand for housing in our community.
I had thought the governor just praised Albany and said that she wished more towns were like Albany in regard to how you are pushing middle housing, especially in areas like North Albany.
This doesn't relate to middle housing, and that's, middle housing is, does not equate to affordable housing, so that, this is not related to that.
I thought that they justified middle housing by saying that the more middle housing you have, the more affordable housing would be, and there is a direct correlation.
So actually, the Middle Housing Project, one of the primary goals was to have more housing variety and more options of different types of housing, maybe different housing sizes, and maybe in the long term, some of those units, because they may not need as much land, or the cost may be less, those might be more affordable, but that, it, the primary goal of the Middle Housing Project was to create diversity, where we have 65% of our housing stock, it's detached housing and manufactured homes, and over 25% are multi-dwelling units, and very little is in between. That was the primary purpose of that project.
Thank you. May I ask another question? I have, it's a long grant. On page 22, there's mention of reducing the concentration of affordable housing in the center of the city. Why would you want to reduce any affordable housing anywhere in the city?
We're not reducing the concentration, the goal is that there are affordable housing choices throughout the city, which would eventually mean that if you were looking at the number of units per area, it might mean on an overall scale, doesn't mean we're removing any affordable housing, and we don't do that. I mean, we don't own affordable housing, but we're trying to encourage housing choices throughout the city and accelerate affordable housing production wherever people want to build it, and HUD, there, we don't have any what HUD calls recap areas, which are areas of concentrated poverty in the city of Albany, but in some communities, there are census tracts in areas where there are a lot more lower-income people. We do have some census tracts, I live in one downtown that has a higher percentage of low-income people than not-low-income people, but we don't qualify yet as having, anyway, it's just, it's just an opportunity to encourage housing throughout the city and not just in, you know, one area of the uptown. And really, our housing is, it is dispersed, but it's mostly centrally located, those units that are publicly supported, if you look at that map.
Okay, I have a couple of funding questions as well. There is mention of $449,000 of SDC contribution here, and I'm wondering, so that's $449,000 of SDC fees that are not going toward, what would they normally go toward? I refresh my memory, because we're putting it toward this.
So transportation SDCs are used to fund projects in the Transportation Systems Plan, and Goldfish Farm Road is a road that is eligible for Transportation Systems Development credits. So when a developer builds a road that is in, is a priority project in the Transportation Systems Plan, they're eligible to receive a portion, to receive some help through those SDC credits to build that road, because the road is usually an arterial or collector, so it's larger and maybe wider than what maybe is just needed to serve the development. So for the Farmworker Housing Development Corporation project, they're one of our partners in this, if we're successful, they will get some funding. Anyway, they have to build Goldfish Farm Road from south of Walmart and the coastal crossing neighborhood to, to Spicer Road, and because of the length of that, even though it goes through their property, and because of the classification of the street, they would get credit on their SDC fees.
And Counselor Novak, I'll just add that that's something we do as a matter of course. If developers are required to overbuild, you know, for instance, they have to construct the entire road, even though their development is only on one part of it, then they get, are eligible for SDC credits to help pay for that building that goes beyond what is strictly required by the code for their, their particular project.
Oh, that makes sense, and I appreciate you adding that. There was also a number that, I, I just, I don't, staff fringe benefits, $311,500. I mean.
So that's three years of anticipated benefits, so we're using our staff time as a match between.
Okay, it's a match.
Several, it's, yeah, it's not a cost that we're paying, and it's, it's already in the budget, but we projected three years of several different staff people's time to work to remove barriers to affordable housing in the Development Code and all the tools that we're working on already in our current jobs, and then also to administer the, the funding, which we actually align with the CDUBG program so that it doesn't take that much more staff time. So that's, those are our costs, city's costs in the budget.
I, I've never seen that in all the, I've never seen, I know, I've heard the term fringe benefit, but I've never seen it in a report. Can you tell me what that equates to? I, I mean.
It, it's all of our costs for medical, dental, retirement, anything that isn't a salary that the city pays on behalf of the employee.
Thank you.
Already done, Counselor? And also, this is a HUD grant application?
Yes, I understand.
I think that's why it's in there, because we haven't seen it either.
Okay, because I've never seen it ever. So I've asked about areas of opportunity. I, I can say this, I understand that there are reasons why you're doing this, and, and you feel that they are good reasons, but I, the only way I could support this is if the city added language exempting all of North Albany from any of it. North Albany needs to be off the map for any additional development. We are way too built out, it's dangerous, it's, the people of North Albany don't want it, so that's what I would say. The only way I would support this, if you added language that said, "None of this will occur in North Albany," then okay, but otherwise, I can't support it. Thank you for answering my questions.
I can answer them. This grant doesn't have anything to do with North Albany. It's Goldfish Farm Road from Highway 20 to Spicer Drive.
That, that's one of the potential projects, so our anticipated partners are many of the people that receive CDUBG funding, Habitat for Humanity, Dev Northwest, you know, it, a nonprofit that develops housing, we would partner with them on wherever they would, would be building housing, where, in the city, so we don't know where that would be at this time.
I need to refuse whoever just said it doesn't have anything to do with North Albany. North Albany is defined in this grant paperwork as a high-opportunity area. It also references multiple times the words "well-resourced." People in the city consider Albany, North Albany, to be well-resourced, so I just want to put out there, if you're telling me it doesn't have anything to do with North Albany, great, I will hold you to that, and so will the people of North Albany.
An error, Counselor, I'm sorry.
So we included all of our climate-friendly areas as examples of areas that are, are well-resourced, and there is a climate-friendly area proposed in North Albany.
May I ask where?
Doesn't mean that any of the funds will be spent in North Albany, we may not even get the grant. The climate-friendly area is areas already zoned for mixed-use commercial and commercial in North Albany off of Hickory Street.
Off of Hickory, and I'm sorry, I missed the other part.
Hickory, just Hickory Street, properties franning Hickory Street and along up to North Albany Road, and there's a vacant property on the other side of North Albany Road.
Thank you.
Counselor Madigoo, you have anything?
Just for FYI, I believe the climate-friendly areas map is actually in the packet.
Counselor McGee? Counselor Kupczynski, do you have anything? Counselor Newton Azar?
I'm good.
Thank you. Written materials were submitted by, by, before the deadline, forwarded to the council, written materials were submitted by chance in Habitat for Humanity. I hope you had a chance to take a look at those. No one signed up to speak virtually, and no one signed up to speak tonight. Does anybody present would like to address this issue? I will give you a few minutes to do that. If no one in the chambers would like to do that, please, please tell us who you are and what organization you're associated with.
My name is Kamal Nasser, they call me Mr. G, and I represent the Albany Area Habitat for Humanity, and just want to state that, that of all the cities that I've worked with, city of Albany is one of the forefronts in, in this area in, in focusing on what needs to be done for the affordable housing, for the. in focusing on what needs to be done for the affordable housing, for the affordable housing market, and we fully support your efforts, as you saw in the letter. We do have some properties that we are looking to develop in the next couple of years, and they're, they're in the city, not in North Albany, as mentioned, off Front Street and 34 in Ermine. And if all goes well, we're looking at trying to create some sort of cluster cottage to work with our elderly community and affordable housing in the elderly community. And we look forward to working with the city in the near future and hope all goes well. And, and either way, we're going to make it happen, one way or the other. Just wanted to say that I fully support what we're doing here, what you're doing here, and the department is hardworking and they're wonderful, and, and look forward to working for them, with them in the future.
Thank you. With that, is any other, thank you very much. I declare this public hearing closed at 6:27 PM. Counsel, time for discussion. Any further discussion, Counsel? Thank you. Would the Counsel, I can make a motion to approve the submission of the grant application to HUD?
I move we approve this middle of the grant application.
I'll check.
Got a motion?
Myself or Marilyn?
You can have it.
We're two, there you go.
So, so Counselor Newton Azar will be the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes five to one. Next, on the docket, or applicant, on the agenda is Business from the Public. So no one signed up ahead of the meeting for virtual. I have Dennis Albin speaking on turkey. He's speaking for a group, so he'll be giving, I will give him five minutes to speak for the group. He did, information was sent in to counsel. I read it this morning, I hope the council has also read it this morning or sometime today. Mr. Albin, you have five minutes, please tell us, I want your address to confirm that you live in the city of Albany.
Did you say my address?
No, just tell us, confirm that you live in the city of Albany.
Yes, yes, my name is Dennis A. Bean. I'm here to talk about the turkey invasion in the, in the Mennonite village here in Albany. Recently, I had a conversation with ODFW Wildlife Biologist Greg Reed, and he said that residents feeding turkeys enhances the growth and number of birds. ODFW is currently not relocating turkeys due to, in part, to the possible presence of avian flu and will only trap turkeys in cities that have a no-feeding-turkeys ordinance in place, such as Corvallis, Lebanon, Philomath, Detroit, Jefferson, and Dallas, where daily fines range from $50 to $750 per day. This ordinance can apply only to no-feeding of turkeys. From the ODFW website, current field data indicated high transmission rates of a highly pathogenic avian flu in wild birds. The virus is shed at high levels through all respiratory secretions, saliva, and feces. It can also remain infective in cold and wet environments and remain infective and stable in water and in feces, depending on temperature and humidity. The average male turkey scat is three inches long by one-half diameter. They deposit their scat 12 to 15 times per day. Fifteen males alone produce 100 yards of scat per week. Their scat can carry both fungal and bacterial diseases. A fungus, Histoplasmosis, is a threat to dogs. A bacterial disease, Chlamydia sittachi, or parrot fever, is potentially lethal to dogs. Research shows that turkeys are the number-one carrier of parrot fever. Dry droppings remain infectious for several months and can be transmitted in airborne dust by simply mowing the lawn. Often, these infections are misdiagnosed. Not all scat will carry pathogens, but all scat can. The problems they create include destruction to plants and vegetables in residents' gardens, large collections of turkey scat in high-traffic walking areas, forcing wheelchair patients to risk injury as they attempt to circumvent the problem, damage to vehicles, the potential damage to resident roofs, a common problem well documented, documented by the state wildlife offices, as they frequently nest and peck at roof materials in an attempt to gather seeds. The problem has been exacerbated by some residents refusing to stop feeding them. Feeding wild turkeys in residential areas intentionally or unintentionally is discouraged because it causes them to lose their natural fear of people and can cause them to act aggressively. Feeding them also encourages them to stay in the residential area. Included in my written submission is a document from ODFW listing all the ill effects of feeding wildlife. In conclusion, many village residents, gardening, and pets play an important part of their life offer, life offering motivation to exercise, companionship, and contributing positively to their mental health, which is being threatened by the overwhelming number of turkeys. In the Mennonite village, most natural predators have been eliminated, including raccoons, skunks, and opossums. Due to my 20 years of turkey hunting experience, I can confidently say that during the spring of 2023, I saw approximately 20 different turkeys at the village. This year, there were six distinct flocks, numbering a total of approximately 70 birds by September. Village property has proven to be a preferred nesting location for the hens. They also recognize village grounds to be a safe place to raise their young, with less danger from predators and abundance of food from the garden areas. Extrapolating that amount of growth out to next year, by September 2025, we could expect to see over 200 turkeys, barring some type of intervention. The turkey invasion was a hot topic as a recent village council meeting involving nearly 100 residents. Our Director of Maintenance, Craig Glasser, has been in communication with various officials about what his options are, and he feels his hands are tied because of existing city and county ordinances. We're here before you today seeking your support and asking you to put in place any and all city ordinances regarding wild turkeys, including fines for feeding them, that can help mitigate the threat of disease to both pets and humans, damage to dwellings and automobiles, and the decay of the overall enjoyment of living in Albany.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So you do have an additional three minutes to talk about the other issue you had?
I'm, I'm ready if you want me to do that.
Go for it, you're next up. Well, he submitted two topics, one for cats and one for turkeys. He spoke for the group on turkeys, now he's speaking for himself on cats.
I'm going to talk to you today about the nuisance cat ordinance change request. In 2019, a feral cat began peeing on my barbecue cover. The Mennonite Village ground crew set up a live trap close to my patio and trapped an orange cat with a white blaze on its chest and a curled-up white tail that was unmistakable. It was taken to Safe Haven Animal Shelter, where a chip indicated the cat's name was Cheddar, and its owner lived on Del Rio Street, just to the north of village property. Sightings would indicate that Cheddar has been a nuisance to village residents for years. Cheddar's been trapped three times and taken to Safe Haven Animal Shelter. Since that was deemed ineffective, hazing the cat with a garden hose while it was in a trap and then taking it to a gate in the fence that parallels the railroad tracks and released, was tried. This practice has been repeated between 10 and 12 times, but that too has proven ineffective. Last month, I contacted a community service officer, and a warning was placed on the door of the owner's residence. After the warning was served, Cheddar continues to appear, but now does not have the identifiable collar that used to be around his neck. On September 18th, seven days ago, I took pictures of Cheddar on my patio again, close to my barbecue. I was told that a judge would not consider the case if I didn't have definite proof that the cat was Cheddar. This could only be proven if Cheddar was trapped on my patio three times in six months and have the chip scanned each time. The ordinance says two times. This burden of proof is too high. In the meantime, Cheddar is allowed to continue to trespass and probably destroy private property. In a subsequent conversation, I was told the village itself would have to file a complaint, because I don't own the property. In my life lease, I am paying for access and use of all village property. With that payment, I'm given trespass rights, and as such, I am requesting a change in the nuisance cat ordinance to reflect that I have a right to and qualify for public nuisance city ordinance protection without going through a second party, the village administration. In my electronic submission, I have provided photographic evidence displaying the very unique appearance of the cat while on village property, including my patio. My question is, how many times do village residents really need to see this cat with very unique characteristics over periods of years, destroying, destroying private property and trespassing, captured at least 13 to 15 times, three of which should be documented at Safe Haven, before the nuisance cat ordinance can be enforced? I'm asking you today to please make the necessary ordinance changes that will make the law more effective and enforceable and to allow Mennonite Village life lease holders the same protection as Albany residents who have, who happen to own their own homes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So during this time, council does engage in conversation. We addressed our comments to those different topics at Business from the Council, so we're not silent to hurt you or be rude. We have a product protocol to respond. Thank you. Jessica Becker, is she here with us today? You didn't write down what you wanted to talk about, at least not on this sphere? Well, come on up, you have three minutes.
It's a surprise. It's a surprise. I don't know.
Politicians don't like surprises.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and esteemed members of the City Council. We come before you today as Albany Helping Hands to request that the City of Albany declare these three properties as surplus properties. Our goal is to develop three-story apartment complexes that will address a critical need in our community, preventing homelessness and providing stable housing to those most vulnerable. We aim to provide housing for individuals and families at risk of losing their HUD vouchers. As referenced in Donna Holt's letter from Lynn Benton Housing Authority, that's page six in the packet, many are facing housing instability due to expired vouchers. These vouchers assist families with children, seniors, persons with disabilities, and veterans. Without immediate action, these individuals will end up homeless. Albany residents with expired HUD vouchers are at high risk of homelessness. Our apartments would prioritize these individuals, giving them access to affordable housing. This approach directly addresses the housing crisis and helps prevent homelessness in our community. We believe that housing is not just about having a roof over one's head, but also about establishing a solid rental history. This is a challenge for many people who struggle to find housing due to lack of a rental history or past housing issues. By offering housing to people in those situations, we aim to provide an opportunity for residents to build a positive rental history, making it easier for them to transition into long-term housing in the future. To further ensure that our residents succeed in maintaining stable housing, we will require them to complete a certification process through a RentWell class. This program will teach vital skills in managing finances, being responsible tenants, and understanding renters' rights and responsibilities. This proactive step equips residents with the tools they need to succeed in the housing market, reducing the chances of future homelessness. While Albany has several homeless shelters, there is still a significant gap in housing for people who face additional barriers, such as severe mental and physical disabilities, substance use disorder, or past convictions. Many of these individuals cannot secure housing in trans, in traditional settings, leaving them with few options for stable, permanent homes. Our proposed apartment complexes will help fill this gap, offering housing to those who cannot access it elsewhere. By building these apartment complexes, Albany Helping Hands will create a path forward for those most in need. Our goal is not just to provide temporary shelter, but to help people regain their dignity, rebuild their lives, and become productive, self-sustaining members of our community. Through stable housing, mental health support, and opportunities for personal development, we aim to prevent homelessness before it begins. We respectfully request that the City Council declare three properties as surplus properties so that we can take these necessary steps to prevent homelessness in our community and give hope to those who need it most. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Good job trying to get that all in, but thank you very much. Next is Brad Dennis. You're speaking on North Albany Neighborhood Association?
Yes. So a week ago yesterday, I attended a meeting of the North Albany Neighborhood Association, which is also known as NANA. Several candidates for the upcoming election were invited to speak to the group. Candidates were running for Albany City Council, Benton County Board of Commissioners, and State Representative for District 15. After the candidates spoke, a question-and-answer time followed, and a question that I asked to all the candidates was, what could be done to bring together the various agencies who manage roads in North Albany to allow us to work on the important traffic issues that citizens of North Albany are facing? Shelley Bosshart-Davis immediately said that she would work to bring the agencies to a roundtable discussion before the election. We discussed the list of agencies to invite, which included the City of Albany, Benton County, ODOT, and Greater Albany Public Schools. We asked that gaps be included because of the traffic jams that occur during weekdays at North Albany Middle School when parents drop off or pick up their kids at the dead-end road that leads into the middle school. Renee Perry, who is the Chief of Staff for Representative Bosshart-Davis, contacted me the following morning, which is a week ago, and asked that I please send her a write-up of the traffic issues as I saw them. So I did that, and I had a four-page document which I sent to her and also to the North Albany Neighborhood Association, and also a copy to our mayor. And in response to this document, several NANA members have added additional traffic concerns, so we're compiling quite a good list. And we're just waiting to hear from the Representatives Chief of Staff as to when this meeting will be. So at the end of the NANA meeting, an election of new officers was held. The chair is myself, Brad Dennis, elected. Vice Chair, Peter Carnegie, Secretary Audrey Eldridge, and Treasurer Sonia Prizlak. And we have met with the outgoing leadership team, and we're in the process of completing the handoff to the new team. And our goals for the next year include increasing our membership to 1,000 people, holding a kickoff meeting before the end of November, work on formalizing bylaws for NANA, and to hold quarterly meetings thereafter. So we look forward to working with the city on issues that affect the North Albany area. I just wanted to introduce myself as the new chair of NANA tonight. And we also have our secretary, who follows right behind me on the comments from the public, and so that would be Audrey Eldridge, has a few more things to ask.
Thank you. Audrey, she's here, okay.
Thank you. And I, I'm here because I'm trying to figure out if there are any other neighborhood associations in Albany, outside of North Albany Neighborhood Associations. And I did a little bit of research, I did not find any conveniently, so I thought maybe the council would know. Also, I'd like to understand what's the best way for NANA to be in communication with the city. I know in Corvallis, they do have a council member as the liaison for the NANA, but perhaps that's not what would work best for the council, or maybe the mayor wants to be the point of contact, but I'd like to know what you prefer. I was also curious as to whether or not the city can offer anything to neighborhood associations. I know the one place I could find some information, Corvallis does offer free meeting spaces for neighborhood associations. So we're looking for what options are available. We'd like to be holding our meetings in North Albany and wondered if there was any possible venue in North Albany that the city could offer NANA to use for the meetings. I'll find, well, you may recall that Brad and I filed an appeal a while back on the Riverwood Crossing development. That appeal was settled in early July, but we haven't yet received. but we haven't yet received a final accounting from the city. We know we originally paid in $300. It could go up to $500. We received a lot of donations from people. We had to even turn people away who wanted to donate. But we do want to get their money back to them as appropriate, but we do need to get that final accounting in from the city. And also, I wanted to share with the council, there's a recent petition to revise the Three Basin Rule. And this is the rule that protects the Clackamas, North Santiam, and Mackenzie Rivers. And I thought I'd bring this up to the council, see if there's any concern, because we do use the Santiam for our drinking water. And so I thought I would share this. Thank you.
Can you give her a copy of that?
Yes.
She has someone make her a copy? Thank you. Next is Trevor Lee on the utility fee. Is that your topic you'd like to speak about?
Yes. Good evening, councilors and mayor. My name is Trevor Lee, and I live in the City of Albany. On Monday night, we got a clear information from Director Bailey that the second reading only means that the council gives permission to staff to move forward with fees for this utility tax that they are about to talk about. The street maintenance fee. The people of Albany have been very clear that they do not want a fee. We don't want to give any permission to staff to be able to come up with a fee. The reason staff is doing this is because they know that if they were to go for a vote in front of the public, that it would not pass. So they are trying to use council to push through a fee for them and for their use. Sorry, I lost my thought. A question is, why are we having to push this at this time now? Election season's coming up. Why can we not wait for the new council to decide on any kind of fees that are going forward? And so I just want to ask the City Council to really think about why we should be just letting staff decide that we're going to implement a fee without looking at other options. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Executive Director Grotto, Downtown Association.
Good evening. Lisa Grotto, Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association. In that the council took a little break this summer, I have a few things to catch up on. I'm going to highlight just a couple of things from our August and September newsletters. I wanted to remind you that we have a feature each month called Meet the Neighbors. In our recent issues, we covered, one, Meet the Neighbors, was fun for kids in the summer. The most recent two were Gluten-Free Downtown Dining, and also one on Simple Pleasures and Pastimes. So if you missed any of our newsletters, you can look for Fun Things to Do and Meet the Neighbors. The smiling faces of our merchants and business owners appear on those pages online. And we have hard copy. If anyone would like to come to our office, we'll print any one that you would like from the past, I don't know, three, four years. Also, wanted to remind you that there are still a few things happening toward the end of this month. Albany Civic Theater is in the middle of a play. It's a very different one for them. It is called Evil Dead the Musical. And it plays through the end of September and then also into October. So check that out. I understand that there may be some warning labels on that, so I do suggest you read the article, their materials or something before selecting who you might have join you at that event. Also like to do a quick heads up that on Sunday, October 13th, we're going to have our downtown cleanup. And we're excited that Giving a Hoot will be down there on Saturday, October 12th. So we have a doubleheader in downtown cleanup ahead of downtown trick-or-treat and other fun things. Something else that we have in each of our newsletters is a volunteer spotlight. In recent months, we've highlighted individuals like Oscar Holt from the Natty Dresser, and Gabe Anderson, Margin Coffee, amazing business owners and formerly served on our board. We also have Julie Jackson and Beth Walker, who are current burden members and have served as well for, I think, over 20 years each. And the last two, Eileen Alvarado and Jessica Pancratz, are volunteers. Not on a regular basis sometimes. They step in on special committees and help with things. But Eileen comes over from West Albany High School multiple times a week. And we'll be recognizing them and many others at our awards ceremonies on Monday night. And thank you for those of you who submitted names for those awards.
Thank you, Director. Next is Joe Esker. Did I say that properly? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. My name is Joe Esker. I am a downtown Albany resident and have been since 2019. And as, so, the Street Maintenance Fund came to my attention through the Democrat Herald article of a couple of months ago, I guess. And I just wanted to step forward to to ask that the council consider all the different funding options that we would have for street maintenance and repair. I understand very well and occasionally trip over the pickle that we have with the condition of streets and sidewalks throughout the city. And so I recognize that, yeah, we've got 30 years of this situation getting much, much worse. So I appreciate the efforts of staff to try to put something together that would start getting some money trickling in. But unfortunately, it seems like it is more of a trickle as opposed to being able to actually cobble together something that would do a meaningful dent in the needs. So it looks like 10 times the need that was recognized back in 1996, if I'm reading correctly. So I would love to see reconsideration of gas tax. The city enjoys pretty low gas prices for, in general. And I would imagine that a penny, or two, or three, or whatever seems reasonable would be something that we could consider if the case is made for a very broad and reasonable and way of paying for much-needed street repairs. And in addition to the gas tax, I think about electric vehicles and the problem that they create at the pump. And I'm wondering, as chargers go into place, that there could be some kind of a charger surcharge that would allow for some kind of an effective way to make up for the road miles that are being driven by electric vehicles as well. Then, of course, a general obligation bond should also be considered. And I just want to, I know I'm running out of time, but I did a really quick calculation based on my tax bill.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Can you submit that?
Okay.
Can you submit that to City Clerk, and she can get it out to us?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Wanted to hear your calculation.
Submit, 10 seconds, go ahead.
I looked at the tax bill and found that $2,300 are directly attributable to city obligation bonds and city levies. And as I calculate what is coming at us from the utility bills, just the very basic minimum base charges, water, et cetera, that that amounts to about $1,200 a year. So we're seeing more than half, again, on top of property tax levies that are actually being collected as fees. And we're adding to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is second reading of an ordinance creating an AMC Chapter 14.30, Street Maintenance Fee. Director Bailey, can you give us an explanation? Because we're not creating a fee at this time. Can you please walk us through that?
Sure. Yeah, so just a few notes.
Excuse me, excuse me. City Attorney, can you please read the ordinance first time, title only, second time?
Wait a minute. We have discussion before he reads it a second time.
So Counselor Novak, he can read it in title, and then there's discussion.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm not missing discussion.
There will be discussion.
There's no, we're not missing discussion. City Attorney?
Have to switch banks here. All right. An ordinance creating Albany Municipal Code AMC Chapter 14.30, Street Maintenance Fee.
Thank you. Director Bailey?
Sure. Thank you. So, yeah. First, off the top, let me just remind everyone, and those of you that don't know, we have been providing educational presentations to the council on this since August of 2023. All of that information is available on the city's website, albanyoregon.gov/streets. You can see all of the council meetings, all of the presentations. There's frequently asked questions. All of the memos is all there. So several things that were mentioned tonight, I think, would be answered by reviewing that material. It's all on there. So what this ordinance would do is provide the city with the legal authority to establish and collect a new revenue source, i.e. the street maintenance fee. Whenever you establish a new utility or a new fee, you have to have both the legal authority, and then you have to develop your rate methodology that calculates how people are going to be charged the fee. What is your basis? How is it calculated? How do you handle different customers who are in different situations? The action tonight on the ordinance does not establish the fee. It gives the city the legal authority to establish a fee. Before we send out the first bill, we have to have the legal authority to charge the fee. You don't have to pass this ordinance tonight. This is the preferred approach because it is transparent and clear that it is the City Council's intent, or not, to establish this fee. If you don't pass the ordinance tonight, and you would still like us to work on the fee and bring the ordinance and the fee back, resolution back later, I'm going to need a motion on that. And the reason is because it's quite a bit of work to develop a whole new methodology for a new fee. We'll have to hire a consultant. It's going to take months, six to eight months, depending on how our existing data does or does not help. Then we have to gather new data. And we come back with the council and the consultant to establish the rate methodology and set the initial rate. So using the Stormwater Utility as an analogy, because it's something I was involved with and it's not ancient history. When we developed that charge, we provided five educational meetings with the council, similar to the ones we've given to the council on streets over the last 12, 13 months. And then there was an additional six meetings with the council just to discuss various aspects of the rate and get input and decisions from the council on how you wanted to assess the rate. The same thing would be done here. So those items that we brought back included things like, what is our revenue target? What do you want to do about cost recovery? How do you want to handle special properties? Do you want to ramp the rate? What is the structure of the rate going to look like? What is the non-residential rate going to look like as compared to the residential rate? How are you going to handle special properties? Things where there's one tax lot that has multiple commercial structures, for instance. Examples of rates and calculations by customer type. Do you want to offer tiers? Do you want to offer credits? How do you want those things to be structured? And then finally, once we have all that worked out, we'll bring back examples of rate revenue by rate amount. So it's a long process. There's lots of touchpoints where we come back to the council and say, okay, we've done the work. Now we need your input on this decision point. There are multiple decision points that have to happen. So in addition to the staff time and resources and the consultants' time, this is a huge thing for the community, clearly. And you all have struggled with this, as have city councils, since at least 1982. So part of the work that we would be doing while we're developing the rate is doing a robust outreach and education campaign. We did do, we hired a consultant that specializes in public opinion research, and we did that work this summer. I emailed the full report. Hopefully, it went to all of you. And that is available. So there are, it is not true that nobody wants to pay for streets. And you can see that result in the public opinion research. One thing that I'll tell you that I remember off the top of my head is that street maintenance is the lowest-rated service that the city provides. So it is clear that people in town want something done about streets. It's also clear that nobody wants to pay anything more. Those things are mutually exclusive. We don't really have the ability to do anything with the resources we have unless you want to take money from another program and short that program and give it to streets. And we've had those discussions. Those are also on the web, in the council packets, in the memos. And we have looked at all funding options that we could think of, even some that are pretty fantastical and not used typically around the state. Finally, the reason that we're talking about a fee and not a local fuel tax is because the council directed staff to talk about a fee. Staff brought open questions about a fee, a fuel tax, a bond, shifting general fund monies, et cetera. The direction we got from the council was to work on a street maintenance fee. Not everyone agrees that that is the preferred approach, but that's the direction that we got. It does not mean a local fuel tax is off limits. Certainly not. But the direction we got is to work on a street maintenance fee. And so that's what we've been doing. So just as to the assertion that staff is just making this up and bringing it to you is not true. We've had 13 months worth of discussions, and this is where we've landed. And it's, just for everyone watching, it is a very hard decision. And I would encourage you to go back and watch the council meetings where this council has struggled with this decision. And there is a reason why nothing has been done since 1982 for this topic, because councils struggle asking their communities to pay more for services that the community clearly wants. So if you wanted to direct us to go do a local fuel tax, we will stop what we're doing on a fee and start working on a local fuel tax. We work at the council's direction. If you don't pass the ordinance tonight, please give us a motion on what you would like us to do, because we have a lot of work to do, and this is going to take a lot of time. And if the council is not interested in pursuing any local funding option, we will work on other things. Because we don't have time to work on something that's not going to get at least a reasonable rehearing once we finally get to the end. So that's my request, and I'm happy to take any questions you have about it. But again, I encourage you, everyone who hasn't seen those presentations, to look at them. And I encourage the council to look at the public opinion reporting that we sent around that was requested on Monday.
Counsel, any discussion? Any questions for Director Bailey? Want me to start with somebody else? Counsel reminded you?
Yeah. Thank you for that, Director Bailey. So as Mr. Esker pointed out, this has been a problem for a long time and has continued to grow and will continue to grow. It is not going away. It will just get more expensive. The suggestion to wait until after an election is, you know, something that I'm sure previous councils heard and did. And that's why we've been dealing with this for as long as we have, since 2019. been dealing with this for as long as we have, since 1982. Previous councils, if you read all that material that Director Bailey pointed out, it it's laid out pretty clear. They've chose to kick the can down the road time and time again. This is not a popular thing. We are up here, you know, risking our careers as counselors by passing a fee. I understand it's uncomfortable. It's probably not popular with a lot of people. But I will argue that, you know, I've been out knocking doors quite a bit this election season, and I've talked to a lot of voters. And for every person that's come up here and said they don't want a fee, I've also heard, that makes sense. We do need to do something about the roads. You know, as much as I hate a fee, it makes sense that we need to do that. So it's, yes, there are people saying, don't do it. But there's also several people that are saying, yeah, that we do need to fix the road. So also want to dispute the idea that staff is pushing this on us. I think if anybody knew anybody on this council, we don't just do what staff says. We make our own decisions. And to suggest otherwise is insulting. So, thank you.
Counsel McGee?
While I understand this is a problematic issue, one of the things is that, yes, while you you said you heard that there should be a fee knocking doors, but we haven't heard anyone come in here and say that should be a fee. And for me, that's an issue because it would be, it would have been good to hear that other side, because we didn't, we don't hear that. We just hear that they don't want a fee. And I just think it would behoove us not to look into some additional resources at the moment. I did hear historically, or there was a time when a gas tax was proposed, especially for folks coming through Albany, parking through Albany, using Albany streets, that it would help to pay for some of this work that we have to do. And I understand that, yes, the it has been kicked down the road multiple times. But I I do believe that we have obligation and responsibility to do something about it now. And just hearing from the community tonight, it just doesn't really seem like a popular idea. People are already struggling as is. And even if it's $10 or $20, or, you know, that's a, that's still a lot on someone who's a single parent or in a single household or doesn't come from a two household and two incomes. We do have to consider that. And I know things are not going to get any, I guess, inexpensive. But I think we we heard from people who don't want it. And if there were people who did want it, then they should have been here or could have been here to say something about in favor of.
Counsel Novak? Oh, yeah, please, comment on your comment.
I I agree. It's unfortunate that those folks did not come in here. But we cannot govern based on people who are yelling the loudest. We have to govern knowing what we think is the best for the community and go out and meet people where they are to get that discussion. And to your point about people who are struggling, this is the best option for those who are struggling, because we have the ability to give a discount to those who are struggling. We have a mechanism in place for utilities to help those. That is not in place for a gas tax or a bond. Those things, we don't have the flexibility to set rates based on our needs and the community's ability. We have more flexibility with this fee than we do with a tax or a general bond, which we might also have to do in the future. Because this is not, this is a really big problem.
Sure.
And even this fee is not going to be enough to to fill the hole, pun intended, that is our streets.
And I and I get that. Just, I just want to, I hear you, Counsel Montague. I hear you. My other piece is that even the mechanisms that we have in place now to help people who are struggling are not good enough. People are still falling behind on a regular basis about the mechanisms that we do. And sometimes, even with like the water bill, I've heard several people reach out about the increase and why is it costing so much and having problems with getting assistance. So, you know, I don't even think the mechanisms that we have in place are all that, to be honest. I think we could do more. Obviously, we're not going to be able to meet every single need. But even the mechanisms we have right now, and if and if we have mechanisms that are, we do have mechanisms in place to create some additional mechanisms for a gas tax. It's not that hard if you have the blueprint.
You have a comment to that? I'm going to go with Counsel Novak. She was holding.
I will yield to Counselor Newton Azor and bring my points back after.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I want to address Counselor Montague's comment about how we would have more control and that we have more low-income programs. So I believe a few months ago, we had a presentation about, you know, we have a low-income program with our water. And it's historically, has not been taken advantage of. I think it was quite laughable. I think we had 32 citizens take advantage of our low-income assistance for water bills. Yeah, okay, I was doing, there you go. It's historic. So there's already mechanisms that are technically in place, but people are falling behind still. Those services are not being taken advantage of. People are, those are reaching people. In addition, I've also been talking to a lot of folks. It's campaign season. After all, I'm not running for office, but I believe in democracy and talking to voters. And I've also heard from people that they weren't comfortable with a street maintenance fee and that they calculated, they said, why don't we have a gas tax? Everyone else has a gas tax. Why can't other people pay for this? And there was a comment from someone from the public, I do not remember their name, but this is on Monday, a gentleman came forward, and he said that he did the math. Hey, if it's a $16 a month fee, if we had a 10 cent a month, a 10 cent a gallon fee, like, it's so much less if we had 10 cents per gallon or, and that's quite, quite a high gas tax. Like, that's just drawing a round number out. That would actually be less of a financial burden, especially if you then consider with some of our low-income assistance programs, we are still doing a sliding scale. It would probably end up being about the same. And then when you think about electric vehicles, I do like the idea of, because we do have, we're one of two cities in Oregon that received a grant. If you guys didn't know this, pretty cool. We're getting a new charging station for our electric vehicles. But I do like that idea of electric vehicle, you know, charging fee.
Surcharge.
Surcharge. But also, I want to reiterate that electric vehicles, I believe, according to the DMV, make up about 1% of vehicles, right? It's not a lot. So there are other more creative ways. And I'd love to still see exploring, you know, gas tax, exploring things like that as well. And another thing, I'm uncomfortable with the methodology and not understanding the process before, so before passing this kind of ordinance, I I'm uncomfortable with passing it without understanding the methodology and the calculation in place for for how everyone will be impacted. Thanks.
Counsel Novak?
Thank you. I want to review some of the information in this ordinance, beginning with administration and rulemaking, Section 14.30.010. The director shall administer and enforce the provisions of this chapter, have the authority to render written and oral interpretations, conduct audits, and to adopt administrative rules and procedures governing the administration, enforcement, and collection of the street maintenance fee. That's a lot of power to put in the hands of an unelected official. I I personally have an issue with ceding legal authority, because I believe the people who vote for us are looking to us to do right by them. So that that's an issue that I have. Also, I have a question with regard to Section 14.30.20, number four. Actually, it's, that's not right, number two. 14.30.20, number two. Customer account classification shall be determined by the director or the duly authorized representative. So we're going to have different classifications with regard to who pays what. Can you tell me what those parameters are, please?
With the caveat that we haven't established them yet, that there will be typically a residential group, and then there are non-residential, which would be commercial, industrial, multifamily, et cetera. So for instance, you might charge a residential customer 1X of the fee, and a multifamily property that's an apartment complex might be charged 0.7X of the fee. That is a different class. Commercial customers and industrial customers are probably going to be, you all get to decide this, probably though, going to be charged based on some consideration of the burden that that business puts on the street system, which, for which we use an international manual produced by the International Institute of Traffic Engineers, who are very smart people, and they really like this stuff. God bless their hearts. And they go through and calculate trip generation based on use of a property. So a coffee stand versus an accountant's office versus a chemical manufacturer, they would all have different trip generation factors, and that would all go into the rate. And they would be in a different class. You can do it in more simple ways, or you can do it in more complicated ways. And you all get to decide all this. So there will be different classes of customers, for sure. Or there won't be. You can decide. You can say every single property in the city pays a dollar, or whatever. You get to decide. This is up to you. So, so yes, typically, there are different classes.
Thank you for answering that. And I have a few more things that I'd like to run past everyone. Section 14.30.25, number three, says, it is not necessary that expenditures of the street maintenance funds specifically relate to the parcel or property from which the fees are collected. I know you can take that in more than one way, but I found it a little bit concerning, because I know that there are people who said to the surveyors, to the consultants, that they would be willing to pay to have their crappy local street that they live on and drive on fixed. And I, there's a sense in which I read that language, and I think, so this person who's paying this money, thinking that their street's going to be fixed, not necessarily so, because they're giving money, and it's going to go somewhere, maybe their street, maybe not, maybe their street's 15 years away. We don't know. I just think it seems like it could be a little disingenuous to anybody who said, yeah, I'll give money if you fix my street.
Sure. So that's part of the education process that would be happening, you know, while the rate is being developed, is we would need to address concerns like that. If you give us $100 a year, we're not going to do $100 worth of work on your street, because that would not be very economical and efficient use of our funds. Just like when you pay your water bill, your water main that's in front of your house may or may not get fixed or repaired or replaced that year. It's replaced based on a priority that we select. That is something staff does. So that would be part of the communication and the reporting that would happen afterwards. We would develop a plan that would then report out, this is what we've done with this money. And so that's how that would work. Now, there is a process. If a group of neighbors want to improve their crappy street, as you describe it, they can come and request a local improvement district be formed. Absolutely. If you want your street improved and you want to pay for it, come on down, and we will help you get a local improvement district started. Absolutely can do that.
Could we have done that regarding the undergrounding fee that everyone got slapped with? Everyone who is part of Pacific Power?
No, the Pacific Power chose to charge, to pass that fee on to their customers.
And Pacific Power says the city of Albany could have paid it and chose not to. So I don't know who's, everybody's, you know, they blame you, you blame them. The bottom line is the people here get screwed with one more line item on their, pardon me? I am on topic, sir. No, sir, this is relevant. I'd like to finish, though, with my final comment with regard to this. It's 14.30.50, civil penalties. I remind you that the language in these ordinances says that the people of Albany ordain upon themselves. Now, listen to this language, and you tell me if the people of Albany would ordain willingly and knowingly upon themselves the following civil penalty. Any person who is found to have violated an order of the director, or who willfully or negligently failed to comply with any provision of this chapter, and the orders, rules, and regulations issued hereunder, shall forfeit and pay not more than $1,000 for each offense, as determined by the hearings officer. Each day on which a violation shall occur or continue, shall be deemed a separate and distinct offense. Violations afterward. Violation of any provision of this chapter in addition to any civil penalties shall be an infraction. $1,000 a day for each offense. Counsel, do you really believe the people of Albany would ordain this upon themselves? I wouldn't ordain it upon myself, nor would I ordain it upon anyone in this town. Thank you.
Yes, it seems like we've gone down this road multiple times, over and over again, trying to kick the can down the road rather than doing what we are elected to do, and that is to make some hard decisions. And it's time for us to get this done, get this started. And the sky is not falling by any way, shape, or form. No fees are being structured at this point in time. We're simply, simply allowing staff to move forward with setting up that methodology, which is going to take months and months, and possibly, it may be a year or more before anything actually happens. And I think it's well past the time that we say, oh, we're so tired of the roads. We want to have the roads fixed. But as the director said, if we're going to take money from someplace, where do you want to take it from? That's why we are elected to make some hard choices. And I have no problem with saying, this is the right thing to do at the right time. Because if not now, when?
Counsel Smith?
Counsel Kopczynski summed up everything I was going to say. Thank you.
So I will say this. The action we're talking about tonight, like I said at the NANA meeting, like I said the other night at the city council, just gives staff the authority to work on this ordinance, not to create the fee, not to set the rate. Staff will not do any work that we do not authorize them to do. This document gives us legal authority, the staff, to work on an ordinance. That's it. Doesn't set the rate, doesn't set the methodology. Am I correct, City Attorney? So this discussion is a moot point, because we haven't developed a structure yet. We haven't done the rate assessments yet. We haven't had the community conversations yet. That, we're talking about a six-month to a one-year, one-and-a-half-year process. But staff will not dedicate time to it unless we create this ordinance. And that is it.
Didn't Director Bailey say that you could direct her still even without passing this ordinance? I just want to be clear, be clear.
You can. It's, we, passing of the ordinance is a clear message that the council would like to consider the establishment of a fee. We can get all the way down the road, and you hate the fee so much, or whoever's here, since we're having an election, does not like the fee, and it never passes. That's entirely a possibility. What I, what I'm trying to convey to you is, this is a clear approach. When it's stormwater, we ended up passing the ordinance right before we passed the rate resolution. That had other extenuating circumstances going on. So you can do that. The ordinance just has to be in effect before the resolution can be accepted for the rate. My point that I'm trying to make is that this is clear. And, but you can not pass it, and you can pass a motion, that direct step to start working on it, and we will. But if you don't pass the ordinance and you don't pass a motion, I don't know what you want me to do. You'll have to tell me what you want me to do, because at that point, I'm not sure. We've been through fees, gas taxes, the whole thing. And you'll just have to tell me if you would like us, or you can tell us not to work on it at all, and we'll just let the streets fall where they may and do our best with what we have, which is what we've been doing this whole time. So that's where we stand. You, you can not pass the ordinance, but tell us to do the work through a motion. And that's okay. It's not the preferred alternative.
I do have one comment. Counselor Newton Azar said that she was uncomfortable with passing the ordinance without understanding the methodology. Without the ordinance or without a motion, there won't be any methodology developed. That's how we get there. It's, we say, go ahead, develop it.
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, you're correct. The fee, and I think it's been said by a couple of the counselors and Director Bailey, the fees or that ends up being included once the ordinance is passed, is going to be decided by the council. The Director Bailey won't randomly pick a number out of a hat and put that down as a fee. It will be the council's decision on what that is, or if it's zero. It's completely up to them. The other, I think another benefit of maybe having this mechanism in place now is that if the, if the citizens of Albany want to have a gas tax in lieu of this, then that gives an opportunity for the city to work both angles to see which one is more preferable for the citizens of Albany. In the past, when we, the last time we went out for a gas tax, it was put on the ballot literally at the last second with no pact that was formed during anything and it was kind of, hey, do you want a tax? Well, no, we don't. And so I think with some, some, you know, outreach, you know, created for the citizens of what would they prefer, maybe that, maybe that would be the direction the citizens want to go, but we'll know, we can be working both at the same time. Because ultimately, this fee is going to be paid by ratepayers, which are all the citizens of, well, a good chunk of the citizens of Albany, and that's it. If we went out for a general obligation bond, that's going to be paid by the, the property owners, the property taxes of the citizens of Albany, and that's it. If it was a gas tax, it's paid by the users of the road, which is people who come in, come into Albany and work in Albany and go home to a different city every day. It's, it's, could be some argued evenly distributed. There's, you know, work trucks that are coming out of Salem that come up and down the roads that do a lot of the damage to our roads. They won't be paying anything if, you know, without a gas tax. So, another option would be if you had this, this fee established, you could, you could give, kind of like Corvallis did a while back with their service fee, give the voters an option. We're going to go out with, you know, I'm making up numbers for, just for illustrative purposes here. Five dollars is the fee per month with a three percent gas tax. If we have a zero percent gas tax to get to where we need, it's a twelve-dollar fee and gives us, you know, something like that to give the citizens an opportunity to express their, their opinions and what they would like to see. So this tonight, again, we're be, you know, I don't want to beat it to death, but yet tonight, this just creates the vehicle for us to put in the fee in place at some point in time. Like Director Bailey said, that's probably a year down the road and the council's going to be the ones who make that decision, so.
I have a question. You mentioned having folks make the, make the decision at the ballot box. If we were to pass this ordinance, what, I feel like it would hurt the campaign for a gas tax. I feel like it would be in good faith to say, hey, thumbs up, yeah, let's go ahead and start working on this process and at the same time also be able to develop something, to be able to go onto the ballot and say, hey, do you want to have, you know, the five dollar with the three percent or, you know, an eight dollar with the zero percent?
I don't think this November would work.
Oh, I understand that.
Okay, yeah.
No, but also it would still take time to implement what the fee might be anyway.
Right.
But I think it would give us time to, like, say, hey, thumbs up, go ahead and let's create like kind of this mathematical formula of what we would need. And here, here's your options. Like, something's got to be done, we all agree, something needs to happen. But I think we need to let folks have more of, more of a say on that. I worry that passing this ordinance would then make feel, it would make people feel like it's more like a bait and switch, like, oh, we're going to pass the gas tax and then, then they're going to do this because they have the permission, you know? I feel like it, it is, it feels like a better in-faith.
I'm, so.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, I think so. So you're saying you would be in favor of working them both at the same time to?
Yeah, and not passing the ordinance, but working them both.
I, I think, I think we're just abrogating our responsibility as counselors to make a decision. It's time to do something rather than just keep coming around the corner, kicking this can down the road, make a decision, and then other counselors down the road will have opportunity to weigh in because obviously none of us may be around in next couple of sessions.
Then why y'all ain't do it last, before we got here? If it was this easy? If we had to do something, we, y'all should have done it before we got, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but that's, that's hindsight, it's always 2020.
Be that as it may.
We're here now, we have to make a decision.
Right. And I, and I am inclined to agree with Counselor Azar about having the option and not making people, it feels a little disingenuous to say we want the ordinance and then say, oh, we can also do this, you know? It doesn't seem transparent, it doesn't seem genuine.
We've already hashed out the reasoning why gas tax.
But I have also understood that even when you all talked about a gas tax, that it wasn't campaigned, it wasn't promoted, it wasn't talked about so much. So, that's a moot point.
It was hastily put onto the ballot, there was no campaign behind the call.
My point, that's my point.
Yeah, that's going to take.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Another year for that.
So it's development of this ordinance.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that we directed staff already to explore both the ta, gas tax and general obligation bond on top of this fee.
Right.
If you remember, what we talked about was, even with a fee, even with a tax, even with general obligation bond, those probably won't even fill the holes that are in our streets. So we're going to have to explore multiple options potentially, and that we already did and passed, I believe, in two meetings ago, in August.
And Counselor Montague, just to, this has taken a lot longer than I thought it would tonight. I thought for sure we'd be here with the public hearings longer than this. Just as a reminder, we did talk about that and everything is still on the table. And I, I understand and appreciate what, what Counselor Newton Azar and McGee are saying. And we definitely can do that. We can work on a rate structure that assumes a revenue amount from a gas tax. Just to get everyone, remind everyone, this is in one of the many presentations on the city's website, albanyoregon.gov/streets. A gas tax, our best estimate in Albany, will bring in four hundred thousand dollars per penny, per year. That's based on data from Springfield and our local gas sales, as best as we've been able to calculate. Most jurisdictions have a three-cent gas tax. If you propose a ten-cent gas tax, it's four hundred thousand dollars times ten, whatever that is. So, that's not going to get us all the way there. And it is inconceivable to put a gas tax on the ballot that would fully fund our needs in streets. It, that's crazy times. So, I, yes, we would need a combination. All of these things work differently, and that's also in one of those presentations. They all have pros and cons and, but nothing is off the table. If you tell us to go work on a fee, you can also tell us and come back and talk to us about how we could do a fee and a gas tax at the, at the same time and propose this sort of either-or thing. If that's what you want us to do, that's what we'll do. And I just want to say to Counselor McGee's point, I agree. Our affordability programs could use a lot of work and we started looking into that for all the city utilities and that we're, that we're charging for. And we can definitely make some improvements. And that's a separate work effort, but we're all working, looking at that because it is a, for sure, a problem. That's all I wanted to say.
Well, Counselor Novak was first and I'll go with Counselor Smith. All right, Counselor Smith, kind of Counselor Montague, then Counselor Smith. Counselor Novak?
Thank you. So, when the city has mentioned the gas tax, they've kept it to three cents a gallon and that is not enough to do, make much of a dent in anything. But a ten-cent a gallon gas tax is still less than a sixteen-dollar additional line item on our public utility bills and would make a much bigger dent. But again, still be less than what the city is projecting for a fee. And I know it said three dollars in some sense, up to seventeen dollars. So, I also wanted to bring your attention back to what I mentioned at Monday's work session, that there is a fund balance of eight point four million dollars discretionary funds. Our gap is twelve point four million. Did anyone look into that? Because that's a chunk of change that we could put toward that gap.
Um, is Deana back there? No. Okay, I'll give you my answer on that, which is not the finance director's answer, I'm not the finance director. What you saw in that CAFR is a year-end balance in the general fund, I'm guessing, because I haven't looked at it, of eight point four million dollars, which is the total amount that's left over from what was budgeted, I'm sorry, from what was received to what was actually expended. And there are many reasons why, at the end of year 2022, which is what that report was, June 30th, 2022, two years ago, that we would have had that much money. Is somebody, no. One of the reasons, for instance, is we had a lot of vacancies in police and fire. Those departments are paid for out of the general fund. There's probably lots of other reasons why that beginning, ending balance was that amount. But even so, that was money that was available on June 30th of 2022. There is no reason to think that that money just carried through for two years. It rolled over to the beginning balance of fiscal year 2023 and went into the resources available for that fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what the ending balance is for the general fund this year because I haven't looked, but relying, it is, I would.
Please.
I would strongly, strongly object to a funding mechanism that said, whatever the dregs are of the general fund every year, go to the street fund. We can't plan anything that way.
Well, I understand that and I'm not suggesting that. I'm just trying to find some money. Because I've suggested this gap of twelve point four million.
Per year.
Yeah, three point seven six percent of the city, city budget, and I'd like you to find it in the budget. I made suggestions regarding maybe cutting a little bit of staff and that was, that was not accepted. And then I suggested, well, maybe we cut a little tiny percentage of staff salaries to make, make this gap, rather than adding an additional burden on to the already, I don't know, eight or nine items on the public utility bill?
No.
It's, it's, it's a lot of items. We're paying more and more, it seems to me, for less and less service. So I'm trying to find the money anywhere I possibly can.
So we've had this discussion and we're not cutting salaries to do this.
That's fine. I would just like this, I would like the city to consider, as that Mr. Escher said, would you look at some other options? I, business people look at their budgets and guess what? They do cut staff, they do cut, you cut line items, you cut food that you can't afford to serve, you make cuts. City government, not so much. Government in general, not so much. Don't touch my money, don't touch my money, but it's okay to put it on the people.
Have you heard of our library budget and our parks and recreation budget? Those are bare bones.
I have heard that they are. I'm just looking at what can we cut? How can we do this without putting yet another burden on people in this town that are overburdened?
So, Counselor Smith, you have something?
I want to call for the question.
Thank you. Will the council like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the ordinance, creating Albany Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen point thirty, Street Maintenance Fee.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no.
No.
Three to three.
Any call, roll call, please.
Counselor Kopczynski.
Yes.
Counselor Montague.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor McGee.
No.
Counselor Novak.
No.
Counselor Newton.
No.
That's three to three, Mayor.
I'm going to vote yes, on creating an ordinance.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, a word of contracts, exemption from competitive bidding and sole source procurement of fire alerting system, Fire Chief Chris LaBelle. Page eighty-nine and ninety-two in your packet. Your mic's off, please. Right now.
My, okay, I'll keep this super brief. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the request before you this evening is approval to use sole source procurement for purchasing a new digital dispatch alerting system to be placed at all of our fire stations. The current alerting system has been in place since the early eighties and is extremely outdated, as well as it's reached the end of support and warranty. Local agencies such as Lebonde Fire and Corvallis Fire are going to a new system. So there will be new infrastructure at the Lynn County Sheriff's Office at the 911 Center. That's already in place, so right now is the perfect time for us to make this changeover. Total cost of the project is just over two hundred eight thousand, which we currently have set aside in our biennial budget for purchasing this. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counselor Smith, your first then.
Thank you. Fire alerting system, my head says Plektron. How does, what is it, what is this thing and how does it alert people and, and alert them to do what?
Okay, exactly. So as soon as the call is received at the 911 center, they gather the information, then they push a button and that alerts whatever fire station, whatever district it is, to respond to that emergency. Right now, the system we have is an old-school, like a fire pager that is broadcast and then it turns on the PA system at the fire station and that alerts our crews. There is new technology out there that is absolutely amazing to where, when they receive the call, as their dispatcher is typing in the information, that information is being broadcast immediately to the fire stations. And it's actually a Siri voice that is telling us nature of the condition, location, what stations are supposed to go, so the dispatcher is actually able to get more information from the caller while we're being dispatched at the exact same time, so it actually will improve our response times. As well as, there's built-in redundancy. The system that we currently have, if for some reason power is knocked out or that system goes offline, we have no way of knowing. And that has happened in the last twenty years to where that system goes out, dispatch will alert a station and they have no idea that they have a call because the system is offline. And so, at that point, the 911 center either calls the fire station or dispatches another station. This new system is in constant contact at all times with all the fire stations that are connected. So if at any point that system goes offline, the dispatcher knows immediately and they could call the fire station and let them know that the system is no longer up and that there's an issue and we can start to work on that.
Is, is there a redundancy built in so that there's no lapse and?
Exactly, yes.
The power goes down or something?
Yep, yep, there is built-in redundancy, yes. Great question, there is.
That was a very good explanation, thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet.
Yes, Chief, this is real tangential, but years ago, we had a lot of kerfuffle about, I think it was the 700 megahertz system changeover. Is this any way, shape, or form related to that old technology? That's even probably old technology now.
Yeah, and that's more the communications between vehicles and what we're talking. So that's, that's a whole nother kind of topic. That's the radio system itself and this is more isolated to just the dispatch to fire stations and that notification process.
That other problem has already fixed itself with the improvements?
Yeah, we are doing some, some improvements, but we're not quite to that seven, eight hundred megahertz. Yeah, it's a very expensive, something that we're budgeting for the future, but yeah, it's, it's very expensive.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other counsel?
I move to approve the resolution on page ninety-one.
Second.
All those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Item B on the words of contracts, exemption of competitive bidding for sole source procurement of document management system support. Director Park will be speaking to us today, page ninety-three to ninety-six in your packet.
Director Park is out today. So I am Luke Cotton, IT Project Manager for the IT Department.
What's your name again?
Luke Cotton.
Okay.
I am informing you about the memo and the resolution on, in your packets. It goes into the document management system that the city currently uses for records management, along with considerable automation and web forms and efficiencies across the entire organization. This is to get continued support and licensing for that product from Cities Digital.
You have more for us?
Unless you have other questions or?
Counsel, do we have any questions for Luke?
No, I just, well, just would like to request a demo because it looks pretty cool. As somebody who uses document management systems for a living, I thought it sounded pretty, pretty neat, so.
It is a considerable tool. I love working in it all the time. We can take a physical process of scanning documents and it can OCR, it can grab all the information out of those documents and it can automate considerable amounts that have been manual labor for years and years. And we continue to expand that, this tool, every single year. We ask for automations that are built by this company over. We ask for automations that are built by this company over many, we've probably had this thing for well over a decade and plus. And this tool helps in police records management, your packets, records management of those. It's, it's involved in all of that. It is the backbone of a lot of our records across the city.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions?
Another good explanation, thanks.
Thank you.
I move we approve the resolution on page 95.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is adoption of the consent calendar. Before we take action, I wanted to welcome Tammy Cockrell. I hope it didn't steal your thumb, man. Cockram? Cockram to the HRC, matter of day. So thank you for joining us in our citizens' advisory groups.
I would like to pull an item.
Okay, which one is that?
It is item C2 on page 123, the Acceptance Organ Criminal Justice Commission Organized Retail Theft Grant.
Is there a reason for that?
I would like for us to discuss it. I have some questions.
Okay, excellent. Anybody, any other thing where we can go ahead and approve this without, with the one exception?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C2.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you. Would you like to discuss that now, Counselor? Is Chief Harden here? There she is. Welcome, Chief.
Hi, Chief. Okay, so the, the point of this is to apply for a grant or you've applied and received the grant for this camera that videotapes people's license plates?
Yeah, it's basically.
Explain the use of that.
So it, it uses video technology, very similar to the radar trailer that, that we got a grant for as well. It's used for visual verification of license plate, but there's actually a technology that runs that license plate. And so the purpose of it in this case is, and there's one word that I would change in this memo, is that we don't think that we're susceptible. We know that it's happening in our city. Target, Lowe's, Walmart, Kohl's are all getting hit by these groups that come up from Northern California, down from Seattle. And so if we know that there's a suspect vehicle that's coming up and down I-5, we can pre-enter that plate, and we'll get an alert to know that that plate is in the area and that they're connected to organized retail theft.
Okay. I guess my concern is, like, the administration of this tool and having to have staff, you know, have to review that. How much time do you think that's going to take? Will we need an additional staff member for that? Because we, we're up here talking about cutting costs, and, you know, I want to make sure we're being responsible with this.
It is a great question. It would take no extra staff. Everything's automated. So like with the radar trailer that we used, we can go in and just pull data. It's all collected by the vendor of the company that creates the LPR cameras. And then it'll send us an email, text alert. It'll, it'll notify our dispatch center if a pre-entered license plate has been spotted. And then we can go in and visually verify. Similar to, like, we would have to do with photo enforcement. We have to visually verify that that is there. It's all automated.
So visually verifying requires a officer to go out and physically look, correct?
No, we can actually pull up a website, which will give us a list of the license plate reads and then the time and location. And if we're in the area, if it works to its optimal capacity, you could have all of patrol units be alerted that this plate is now at Walmart or Coastal or something like that. And if somebody's, like, sitting at the East Precinct, they can quickly clear that location and begin looking for the car.
I just have concerns, you know, I've read an article recently of a city that is incurring the cost of local retailers reducing the amount of security that they are paying for. And I want to make sure that we're not subsidizing local retailers because they're not actually, you know, taking the effort to secure their property and their, their.
Basically transferring the cost.
Their stuff, right. And I, I definitely don't want the taxpayers to have to pay for that.
Sure.
I know that recently we've had to, you know, have a satellite office over near Walmart, and I know there's several calls out there not specifically saying, you know, that this is happening. I just want to make sure that that's not something that we're doing to, to subsidize their, you know, them cutting their costs.
Actually, most, some retailers are cutting their loss prevention staff, their, their actual human capital. Many stores are going to this technology on their own as well. There's a large retailer in town that is doing that, and also will be able to share that data with us if they have a hit on somebody or on a, on a plate. It's an extra automated security feature that many places going to, our airports, large malls, things like that, are going to that to help, kind of give an extra blanket to know who's coming and going that might be there for criminal purposes. But it, it's not, I don't think it's, it's replacing a human being at those stores.
So your hope is that this will reduce the amount of times you'll have to go out for actual theft because it will deter and prevent that from happening?
Correct, and allow us to catch these individuals. In, in our January 1st of 2024, the state of Oregon enhanced the criminal penalties for organized retail theft because it's such a problem up and down the I-5 corridor. So this allows us one more tool to help combat that.
Thank you, I appreciate you answering my questions.
Counselor Dudenmazur.
Is there a policy here in Albany in regards to how long LPR data can be stored?
It would fall under our standard public records, I'd have to check and see what that is, but it doesn't come to mind. It would probably fall under our standard public disclosure and retention laws.
Okay, that, so I did do a little bit of research on, on this without strict guidelines. Some, you know, we, some agencies might, and you're saying it's under their public records. This data can be retained for extended periods of time. That could cause misuse, privacy violations. Long-term storage of this data would create a valuable data set that can be misused by, for surveillance and sold to third parties. Frequently, you mentioned that there's already another store here or business in Albany that's utilizing this. I understand that LPR data is frequently shared between agencies. And even, you know, with private companies, and there's some repo companies have used it in, in some states and cities. The sharing can happen without the knowledge or consent of individuals whose information is being tracked. And then also, like other network systems, LPR data, data sets, those are vulnerable to hacking, and those, that, that hacking has happened. And if those, if compromised, these systems can be used by malicious actors to track individuals, alter records, steal personal identifiable information. No one wants to ever be at the, at the end of that, but it is, is a risk.
Sure, and I, I agree with you about the integrity of the, of the data. We will never involve ourselves with an organization that is not CGIS compliant. That's Criminal Justice Information Systems. They have to meet certain requirements for us to do so. That is, was the same with the radar trailer that we have in use. And, yeah, it may collect the data, but again, we can put it on a purge schedule, and I believe the trailer does have a purge schedule, and we'll retain those documents per our standard records retention. But honestly, if you talk about the number of people coming and going from a Walmart or a Lowe's or something like that, unless we know that we're looking for a certain car, generally, we're not going to even look at that data. It, it is a computer that's looking for specific information for us.
I do also want to, so in a few other studies I read, I think it was like 1 in 10 license plates were misread. There's still like an error. It's like a 90%, like, because dirty license plates or something, you're just carrying a license plate, or sometimes people have those, you know, illegal, kind of like films over them, you know? There's still that error rate. And then I also read that LPR systems can disproportionately capture data in low-income areas or in other areas where maybe more people of color might live and can lead to overpleasing in those neighborhoods and perpetuate existing inequalities. So I wanted to also talk about that.
So the cameras are designed, we're getting the grant specifically to combat organized retail theft at large box stores here in the city, particularly around Interstate 5 and the access points. It's not going to be a surveillance tool. Even our current radar trailer, it has limited capacity. So we're looking for specific criminal behavior, not intelligence gathering.
Okay. Then I also wanted to discuss Celebrite. So Celebrite, so I don't talk about what I've, what I do for a living. I do a lot of stuff in IT and technology. I have, so I understand that this company has faced significant criticisms for privacy violations, transparency issues, and ethical concerns. The technology poses significant risks to personal privacy. And I feel like some alternatives need to be explored that both prioritize both security and protection of civil liberties. And I have three points I want to cover. Privacy violations and lack of accountability being number one. Celebrite's technology allows law enforcement agencies to unlock and extract data from phones, including encrypted communications, which can jeopardize privacy rights. In many cases, individuals are unaware that their data is being accessed, which raises serious Fourth Amendment concerns about unlawful search and seizure. I have read an article as well in TechCrunch, if you read tech things. Celebrite also has, you know, during trainings urged law enforcement partners to not talk about the full capabilities of their technology. And I do understand that that is.
Point of order, Counselor. What in the world does this have to do with the items being talked about right now?
What the grant is for.
Celebrite is a technology.
Understood, but it's being, it's designed for a specific task.
So.
I'm, yeah, I'm.
I'm sorry, I know. I'm expressing my concerns for partnering with this company.
That's, that would be all you need to say.
So, and I understand why they're saying, oh, hey, don't talk about all the, all the capabilities because, you know, they say like this might, you know, impact the effectiveness, you know? I also have some concerns, and I know this wouldn't happen in Albany, but just this is an ethical concern with the company. There have been issues where Celebrite has been unable to keep their tool from, you know, being used to target, you know, journalists or activists and has been used for enabling surveillance. And then lastly, my number one thing that I'm always going to harp on is that technological vulnerabilities. Despite being promoted as a cutting-edge solution, their technology is not foolproof. There actually was a critical vulnerability that was recently uncovered by Signal, if you're familiar with the secure messaging app, that allowed Celebrite's systems to be easily manipulated and cast doubt on the reliability and security of its tools. And so if Celebrite's tools are, are vulnerable to hacking and manipulation, it really raises serious questions and concerns for me about the long-term safety of the data that's even being collected.
Correct.
That's, those are my concerns, and I just wanted to bring those all out.
Thank you. Any other counsel have anything? Counsel? I have a motion.
I move we accept the grant funds from Oregon Criminal Justice Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no.
No.
Thank you. Did you, did we get everybody? Do a roll call, please.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor McGee.
Yes.
Counselor Novak.
Yes.
Counselor Newton.
No.
Thank you. Motion passes, fact of one. Next on tonight's agenda is staff reports. A ratification of decisions made during council break. Contract award for AR 24-21, or 21, fixed base operator FBO building historic hanger, rehabilitation and approval to apply for and accept a Federal Aviation Administration bipartisan infrastructure law grant. Rob Romeo is the, here today.
Mayor, hopefully I can help make this faster. So this is unusual, but these are three items that contracts we had to sign while the council was on break. So Peter signed them according to the municipal code. He has permission to do that. So they're back, they're here for you all to see, to ratify the action that was taken while you're on break. And we have staff here to talk about them, but I just wanted to clarify, this is different than typical contract awards. These have already been signed, and the council is here to ratify them if you choose to do that.
Counsel? What would you like to do?
I'm good.
I'm good with ratifying if we can move on.
Do you need a motion for each one?
We do all three or just the one, each, each?
I move we ratify the three decisions that were made while we were on break.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. I'll start with Counselor Novak.
Nothing, thank you.
Counselor Dudenmazur.
I had some, oh, I had someone reach out to me about, and let me actually pull up the email. I meant to send it over to our staff. It was about actually their information being hacked from our, their water bill. So I'll actually forward that over to staff. It was their concern about their, their account got hacked or, and their personal identifiable information was leaked. So I'll get that over to you as well. And then I had a constituent reach out to me, and I understand that we have some, you know, sidewalk and road repairs happening, but just to keep in mind that accessibility for cyclists and pedestrians should be at the forefront when we're planning improvement projects. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Montague.
I don't think I have anything today.
Thank you. Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes, the gentleman that brought forward the turkeys and the feral cats, a cat named Cheddar. I would like to have staff take a look at, possibly seeing what we can do to modify our ordinances to make it more in line with what other communities are doing, to give some teeth into it, so.
Counsel, Counsel, can I get a thumbs up on moving forward?
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that because I, I would like to see that happen as well.
I have a concern about that.
Okay, so Counselor Smith has a concern?
Yeah. If we, if we create an ordinance prohibiting the feeding of wild turkeys, period, I'm okay with it. If we say wildlife, I'm not okay with it.
I agree.
And I'm thinking about our ducks. So that's, that, that was brought to my attention earlier today. Also, just a, I'm a detailed person when it's really inappropriate or inconvenient, but a feral cat doesn't have a name or a chip. So I understand, I've, I've heard a lot about cats getting out and doing terrible things, and I'm certainly sympathetic, but it's not, it's not fair to the cat to call it a feral cat.
Point taken.
Well, he's a nuisance anyway, feral or not. I am sympathetic, but, boy, I've had cats.
So, in 2020, I brought forth a wildlife feeding code that was not even read for a first reading. In that wildlife feeding code, I'm happy to bring it back. I'm already having some people review it again just to make sure. It talks about songbirds and waterfowl not being part of the code. However, deer, skunks, most of the ones that become a nuisance in that we receive complaints about but do not have actions to take on them, are in the code. Few points of clarification on what the gentleman spoke about earlier. Yes, ODFW will allow trapping of turkeys. However, that is put on the city to do. The city shall trap them, they will issue permits for that, and the city shall process them and give that to nonprofits. None of the staff would like to do that, obviously.
So the nonprofit can then release the birds back anyway?
No, processes and gutting and feathering them and all that stuff.
Not giving them an inmate number.
So.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just getting clarification now.
So, yeah, staff is not really willing to do that. And Corvallis, who does get kill permits each year, they only get five, so. permits each year, they only get five. So in numbers of 75, not really doing much, but a feed ordinance could. Regarding the cats, I just want to clarify that it is three occurrences in the current code. It's more than two, which would be three or more. So that is true. The six-month policy is probably just that a policy and not in the code. However, it is something I need to look at. That code was written in 1986 when I was two. So it is very outdated and needs to be looked at again. I'm happy to do that. We have cited cat owners for trespassing and the like. One last point of clarification, just to clarify things that he said. He is allowed to press charges for trespass on his property. That is his property, even if it is rental. However, the common areas of Menite Village, he is not allowed to do that. That is practice across apartments, condos, all of that. The actual property owner is the one that needs to press charges on that. So if their photos are not on the property and we can't prove that they're on the property, then yes, we will not cite on that. Same with the chip thing. That is not in our code. I don't see that being an issue moving forward. That's just something we'll have to address. It's not something we see often at all, like once a year, cat complaints.
So I do have a question about the public safety concerns, the fecal matter, the sheer amount of 70 birds doing their business. That could be a bit, especially in that environment. I work with seniors in my, my regular life, my business life, and there's, you know, respiratory issues, there's COPDs, there's allergies. That is a concern to me because when they say they trim the yard and the dust is kicked up and person ingests that, it could present health issues going forward. So we can't do anything other than capture, donate, and let somebody else process them or?
So for turkeys, so going back to turkeys on that specifically, taking away the food source through a feed ordinance is the highest recommended method to do so because they are foragers. And if there is no food source, they're going to seek that out. So they will go away. That is something we preach in the city, be it rats, deer, any of the like. They are wild animals that will go find that food source. We have to be careful when it comes to gardens. That was one of the previous council's biggest thing was people grow gardens and gardens attract wildlife.
They have lovely gardens at the Menite Village.
They do. They do.
I'm very proud of them.
So, so putting something over them or around them probably would work?
Yes. And if you talk to the, this is going on about, I mean, this is silly. I'm sorry to keep people that long for this. If you talk to Little Lynn County gardeners, what is it called?
Master gardeners.
Master gardeners, sorry. My fault. Which I have spoken to them on turkeys and rats and all that. They're like, well, it's just part of the name of the game. If you have it, you're going to get those things unless you take extra actions constantly to combat it. So it'd be up to them to continue to do that.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions about this?
Do you want me to bring forth my last turkey code and work on addressing the cat code?
Yeah, yeah, I think I would thumbs up for that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much, Officer Gendel. So Counselor Kupczynski, you have anything else?
No, I'm done.
Counselor McGee?
I just have one thing. I want to invite everyone to the Empower Your Voice civic engagement at the Corvallis Community Center on Saturday. Starts at 11:30 and ends at 3:30. Are you on that panel with me?
Yes, I am.
Ah. Then me and him go on around like 1:30. So if you're around and want to Empower Your Voice civic engagement, come through to see.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith?
Wanted to remind councilors of tomorrow evening's appreciation event at the Riverview, or Riverfront Community Center for members of our citizen advisory groups. Should be pretty nice. And I'll end my comments with a story of wildlife in my past in Albany. Four dogs ago, we had a dog run, a fenced run in a doghouse, you know, outside our bedroom wall in the side yard. And our dog would spend the night in her run. She also had a metal, a galvanized aluminum feeder that was screwed into the wall, and it held 20 pounds of dog food. My husband would fill it with the 20-pound bag of dog food, and she could eat whenever she felt like it. For about a week, we would go to bed, turn the light out, and hear this scraping noise outside. Had no idea what it was. Finally, my husband didn't hear it at first. He thought I was crazy. But I finally convinced him, and he did hear it. And he leaned out the window with a flashlight. And there was a family of five raccoons lined up on the top of the fence, and Mama was in the dog food feeder, having her first, first plate at the buffet. So it was a brand-new 20-pound bag of food. The next day, first thing, Stan emptied the dog food feeder. And the next night, we heard the little scratching sounds, and then it stopped. And looked out the window with the flashlight, and there were the family of five going towards the street where we live, and we haven't seen them since. Take away the food, and the wildlife goes away.
I got one better. So first of all, couple things. The, I've received a lot of feedback about this street maintenance fee. It is an area of concern for a lot of people. And I understand it's, it's a very contentious issue. And we will be looking at other options with what we just did today. So it's going to be a while. It's, nothing's going to rush. Nothing's going to happen overnight. So just let the system play out. Let's get the information from staff, see what it looks like, and then we'll figure out the next steps. And so just please be patient with us. Nothing's going to happen overnight. I'll say that. Last thing, I hope you all had an opportunity to go to the mushroom festival. There were 6,000 people that came to Albany to talk about mushrooms. It was amazing. At 11 o'clock, it started at 10. At 11 o'clock, the parking lots were full. So I went to every booth and thanked them for coming to town, every vendor. And seven of the 11 food trucks sold out. It was a really big event for the city of Albany. And people benefited going to the carousel, eating lunch downtown. So Albany reaped the benefits of this event. So I'll take my hat off to Patrick and his wife. Can I pronounce this? I think it's Wenzenski?
Wincheski, Wincheski and Alyssa Nydager.
I take my hat off to them. So it was a great event. And I met a lovely person named Jude. And if you saw the pictures, I was wearing this cape. And she put it on with my mushroom hat. And I got a chance to talk to hundreds of people about how great Albany is, and they want to come back again for our other events. So it was a really great event for the city of Albany. And, and also, I was blessed last Thursday to add another member to my family. So there's another AJ. My son married, my son John Cameron Alexander married Alexis Franklin. So there's Alexander Johnson II, which is me, Alexander III, which is my grandson. My son's name is John Cameron Alexander, and his wife's name is Alexis Alexander, Alexis Johnson. So it was a great week for the city of Albany, for me, as the mayor of Albany and a family man. City manager's report, if you have one?
Sure. Just two things. Counselor Smith mentioned the CAG event, so if you're able to make it, that'd be great. And then on the September 30th meeting, the agenda is incorrect. It's been changed. Instead of a joint planning commission meeting, it's starting, it's a regular city work session at four. And then the planning commission, and that meeting will end at 5:15. So councilors can go to the Downtown Association Awards. And then the planning commission will meet after that. So that was what we were able to work out and apologize for the double booking there at first. So just note that September 30th meeting starts at four.
I want to thank Counselor Novak for that. So that's that it?
Can I make a shameless plug?
Okay, go ahead.
If you guys want to learn how to make challah, I'm teaching a class through Albany Parks and Recreation. And there's a few seats open for this Saturday's class. So if you like bread, who doesn't? I'll teach you how to make it.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. And so, and just what the city director Bailey said, is Monday we're at 4:15, four o'clock to 5:15 on our regular session. Monday, October 7th at 4:00 PM will be a budget review committee meeting. And then Wednesday, October 9th would be our 6:00, 6:00 PM meeting for city council. And, say again?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Our friends from Helping Hands have been here the entire evening and are probably wanting to know what's going to happen with their request.
So can you, city attorney, give us, or city or director?
Do you, give you an update on the property?
No, the, the request. What, what steps do we need to take to?
We've had a couple of requests for, for what to do with that, or requests related to that property.
Right. I, I think before we, the, the council decides what to do with that, the staff needs to come in and talk to the city about what some of the ramifications would be. It's not, this particular property is not as simple as just if, the property would have to be rezoned. We are going, and, and again, this is something that we'll have to have our staff come back with, but they're going to be going out for a urban growth boundary expansion in the, in the future to expand, looking for, to expand for industrial property. That property is zoned industrial right now. If we give that property to someone and rezone it, and then go to the state and say, we need some industrial property, we need to expand our urban growth boundary because we don't have enough, that is going to definitely be something that the state will come back and say, well, no, you don't. You don't need it. You're, you're rezoning property now. There may be ways around that that are palatable to the state. But that's something that I think that our, our planning, our development director, Matthew, could prepare something and bring to the council, maybe, maybe at the next meeting in October the 9th or something. If we have, if we have space on the agenda, I don't know.
So, so I want to clarify a question. So if we decide at some point this land is surplus, it'd be open to the public, correct?
It would be, if we declare it surplus, it just means the city can dispose of it. And then we can decide how we want to do that and, and when. So, yeah. But if we're going to declare it surplus, we want to put that on the agenda one night as well. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And Chris, do you have anything else? Director Bailey, have anything else? With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:20 or 8:19?